Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is March 12th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Roll call, please.
Herzog.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
Smeltney.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyland.
Here.
Wyland.
Here.
Doitt.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. And tonight Dominic Sentner is here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dominic, if you'll stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Dominic.
Thank you.
Dominic is from North High School. And what grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
Very good. Your plans for graduation?
I plan on attending Madison for Political Science and then going in for pre-law.
Excellent. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We appreciate the time. And we'd like to invite Principal Last up to give us some highlights of Oshkosh North High School.
Thank you for having me. So I have a couple of updates of the different things that have been going on at North. We had our Black History Month Assembly showcase of our exceptional talent captivated audience featuring compelling spoken word, dynamic dance, and powerful vocal performances. Students demonstrated remarkable skill and artistry while particularly standing out presentations from our North students as well as Vell Phillips students this year. We also recently had our musical. We are incredibly proud of our students and staff for their amazing performance of Catch You, Catch You, Catch Me, If You Can. The recent shows at the Grand showcased the culmination of countless hours of hard work, dedication, and raw talent from everyone involved. The cast's energy was infectious and the entire production was a showcase of collaboration and artistic expression. Communities' Two students recently delivered insightful presentations to staff and community members showcasing a variety of helpful apps. Students effectively communicated the functionality and benefits of the chosen apps, demonstrating a significant advancement in their speaking skills and providing valuable technology insights to attendees. We also had solo ensemble. So the North Music Department successfully hosted the district's solo ensemble festival recently. The event saw over 850 student participants in nearly 1,000 events with thousands of visitors attending. North High students delivered outstanding performances, including 30 students who qualified for the state competition, and we are deeply grateful for the generous support from our students and families who contributed through donations and their volunteer contributions. Reading focus. Oshkosh North staff has undertaken a school-wide initiative focused on enhancing student achievement. To achieve this, teachers are integrating targeted strategies, specifically close reading or content area vocabulary development into their instruction. Eye ready from the end of January of this year to the beginning of March, our second cycle, of our 278 freshmen grew from 38% proficient to 59% proficient in their reading of literature. And then that was the standard RL 8.2. And then freshmen are currently working on reading literature and have already grown from 53% to 69% proficient in the standard R 8.2. Sports, we were just talking about before the meeting. The sports season is drawing to a close with the state playoffs underway. North plays tomorrow night at West. We play against Fond du Lac. We extend our best wishes to all the participating athletes and coaches as they represent our district in these culminating events. As we bid farewell to the winter sports, we are eagerly anticipating the start of our spring season, which is set to commence in the next couple of weeks. Staff engagement. We have consistently integrated staff building activities into our professional development days to foster a stronger sense of team cohesion, enhancement of collaborative skills. Our most recent was the Rock, Paper, Scissors Challenge, and we participated with enthusiastic participation of all staff members and recognize these valuable experiences throughout our professional environment. Looking forward, North is proud to announce our Hall of Fame induction ceremony on April 17th. This event will honor our distinguished alumnus, Dave Ananema, who for his remarkable accomplishments and celebrate the outstanding achievements of our current students. We also have our multicultural days on April 24th where students will showcase their culture with presentations throughout the day for classes to attend.
So those are some of the... You have a lot going on.
We do.
It's very exciting.
Yes.
Anybody? Thank you very much for coming to visit with us tonight. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homeland of the Ho-Chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respects to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. We've had a request to take number five out of the consent agenda and add it to individually considered items. Will you make the motion? Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second. Carolyn Doitt. Call the roll.
Hess.
Aye.
Smeltney.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Doitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. President's Report. This is an exciting evening. First of all, we have two retirements, which is not so exciting. The first one is Crispin Casper, and she's a cross-categorical teacher at Oshkosh North High School and has been there since 2004. And the second one is Carrie Kerner, literacy coach from Emmeline Cook since 2006. I know Mrs. Smeltney has some comments this evening.
Yeah, I do have about Mrs. Kerner. She was obviously at E. Cook the entire time that my kids were there, and I obviously worked very closely with her with literacy and was a volunteer with her. And I just have to say that there is no one more dedicated to her students than Carrie is and to showing up for E. Cook. She, like any time I was on the PTO, anytime we asked staff to come out and do anything, she would be the first person to sign up and would be there at seven o'clock in the morning to support kids showing up for their all-school walks to school. And she also, along with Mrs. Van Damme, created Books on Wheels to take books out into the E. Cook community neighborhoods around school throughout the summer. So she goes above and beyond. But most importantly, like the coolest part that will be missed greatly is the fact that when she takes kids into her little, 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 little office, one-on-one, the joy that those kids find and the sense of belonging and the know that they are loved by her and that she is working hard to help them learn to read is something that will be greatly missed at E. Cook. And so I very much appreciate all that she's done for those students.
Very nice. Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I want to wish both of these retirees, Kristen Casper and Carrie Kerner, all the best for a long, healthy, and happy retirement. I had the opportunity to volunteer with Carrie Kerner at E. Cook on the Meals on We... Books on Wheels, not Meals on Wheels, Books on Wheels. Going out into the greater E. Cook neighborhood, she would load these plastic tubs full of books and board games and take them out into the E. Cook neighborhood. And she and Mrs. Van Damme would go recruiting in the neighborhood, kind of like the Pied Piper's, and draw kids out to participate. Kids got books to take home. They were thrilled with that. They had opportunities to read to a dog. She arranged for that also in the summer on E. Cook campus. So both of these ladies will be greatly missed. And just a reminder that we always need substitute teachers, and so the door is always open for these fine representatives of our excellence teaching staff to return to us as substitutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, as you may or may not know, March is Music in the School Month, and we have Ryan Lindley with us here this evening. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, Ryan. Ryan is a choral teacher at Perry Tipler and Elps. And in case you missed it, he is also on episode 20 of the Mission Keepers podcast. So you may want to go back and review that. He is very enthusiastic about music in our schools, and he has a few highlights to share with us.
Thank you. I'm also the Director of the Oshkosh Youth Choir and the President and member of the Oshkosh Chamber Singers, so I have lots of free time. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Music Department at our wonderful Oshkosh Area School District. The Music Department is the heartbeat of the school district. You go to a sporting event, a parade, a pep rally, and the band is there. In and around December, you can't be invited to a party or event without one of the magical groups being present at over 30 events. Alberta Kimball is full of music from the elementary school educators throughout the year. And finally, the Middle School Music Department steadily keep their students engaged and interested in music education through band, choir, orchestra, the show choir and polka band at Traeger Middle School, and the many cultural experiences at Vell Phillips Middle School. The Music Department doesn't just teach young musicians how to be better musicians. We also teach them how to be better humans. We deal in empathy, storytelling, and community engagement. Students learn to work as individuals as well as teams of homogenous and heterogeneous groups. The Oshkosh North Choirs had a concert recently where they sang songs about food, fundraised for the local food shelter, and then brought awareness to local groups who are experiencing food insecurity. Currently, the Tipler Middle School Choir is collaborating with the Day-by-Day Shelter of Oshkosh in a concert series called "From Darkness to Light: A Journey of Hope." We are currently sitting at $1,200 in donations after two weeks from the community, and we'll be conducting a needed items fundraiser shortly. The culmination of the project will be a concert on May 22nd at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium. A couple quotes from students. Lacey Byer, an eighth grader from Tipler, says, "She joined choir because I have loved music ever since I was young, and it brings me joy. I like that we do things that are going to help the community and learn songs from different cultures." A student you may or may not know, Gus Smeltney, a sixth grader in the advanced reading program, says, "It's fun to have an environment where kids want to do it and have friends in the school who want to do it with you." And Lily Freeze, an eighth grader at Tipler, says, "Being in choir is like having a second family. It brings people together, and we have a lot of fun doing it." I appreciate your time and adoption of Music in Our Schools Month as National Association for Music Education celebrates its 40th anniversary of this event. It's impossible to highlight every program in just three minutes, but watch out for Facebook posts that I created with the help of Hannah Dawson that will highlight each educator. Please advocate for our music programs through educating yourself on what we do on a daily basis, attend the concerts, fund future projects, and help establish full-time positions at each school so that each student can benefit from worthwhile instruction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
And you know my feeling about music. Music is one of the continuum that allow some of our students to be involved in maybe a way they wouldn't have been before, so full support of the music program. Thank you very much. I know Dr. Davis will highlight this, but had the opportunity for a few board members and Dr. Davis to go to Celebrate Education, where over 45 educators were honored for their commitment to education and out-of-the-box thinking. And I think that was the really exciting part to learn about the different things that they are bringing to their classrooms to bring rigor and engagement. Very exciting. And now we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Okay. So busy times around the Oshkosh Area School District. So we'll start at the North Field House. So the North Field House resonated with beautiful music on February 22nd during the annual Night of a Thousand Strings Concert, bringing together orchestra students across the district. The impressive musical showcase featured performances from first-year elementary players through experienced high school musicians from both North and West, culminating in a powerful grand finale of Queen's "We Will Rock." Can't beat that. Vell Phillips Middle School teachers, Mrs. Aylers and Mr. Freeze, transformed their math class into a hands-on learning experience by having students make mini pizzas while mastering fractions and recipe conversions. The innovative lesson built unexpected classroom bonds and gave students practical cooking skills while making math concepts tangible and engaging. As eighth grader Bryant enthusiastically noted, "I was actually excited to learn math," highlighting how this creative teaching approach improved student engagement and created a positive learning atmosphere. Brewing Futures, our unique first-of-its-kind food truck focused on hands-on learning for students with all abilities, has been selected as the recipient of a generous $2,700 donation from Guys Who Give, a local Oshkosh organization of men dedicated to making meaningful community impacts through collective personal donations. The program was nominated by a member. In May, Brewing Futures representatives of students will attend the organization's meeting to share how this donation will positively impact their program and the students that they serve. So thank you so much for your generosity. Oshkosh North's Black Student Union hosted a meaningful Black History Month Assembly featuring diverse programs that showcase student talents and perspectives on this year's theme, Who Am I? The event included powerful spoken word performances, remarks from VSU members, a keynote addressed by our own Anthony Miller, choir performances from North and Vell Phillips, and a special documentary highlighting student reflections on influential black figures. So well done to everybody involved. Oshkosh West Black Student Union also created an engaging Black History Month celebration featuring student speeches, poetry readings, and musical performances that highlighted various aspects of black culture. The centerpiece of its event was an innovative gallery experience offered in both physical and virtual formats showcasing informational posters and videos about influential black historical figures. The event sparked meaningful conversations about black history, culture, and its ongoing impact. The annual Oshkosh Early Learning Family Block Party brought together our district's youngest learners and their families in engaging sessions and purposeful plays centered around building blocks. Our staff partnered with UW Extension to demonstrate how block play develops critical skills in mathematics, physics, engineering, creativity, social interaction, and physical Fifth-grade students at Menominee Elementary School are nurturing approximately 1,000 trout as part of the Trout in the Classroom Environmental Education Program led by School Counselor Brad Bowman. The hands-on project teaches students to care for young fish until they are large enough to be released into the wild while fostering environmental stewardship and an appreciation for nature. South Park Middle School students recently explored hands-on medical skills, including suturing, bone identification, medical terminology, and blood pressure measurement. The learning opportunity was made possible through a visit from Oshkosh West students and Mrs. Schilling, who teaches medical science and careers at Oshkosh West. The students' presenters shared valuable information about healthcare-focused courses available at West for students interested in pursuing careers in the medical field. We appreciate this educational connection between our schools that help inspire our students' future career paths. Oshkosh Early Learning hosted a magical 4K exploration event where future students from the class of 2039, it's a little bit hard to say, but 2039, and their families discovered what their upcoming 4K journey will entail. During the event, incoming 4K students were able to experience some hands-on learning with their families from literacy and math to dramatic play and social emotional learning. As a reminder, 4K registration for the upcoming school year opens on April 1st, and more information is available on our website. Our elementary literacy curriculum, being field-tested across the district, sparked an exciting cross-grade learning moment at Reed Elementary School. First graders studying rocks and minerals in their CKLA knowledge unit received a special visit from a fourth-grade geologist, Jordan, who shared his experience and personal rock collection with younger students. This type of engagement demonstrates how the curriculum inspires curiosity, and while the curriculum provides excellent foundation materials, it's also important to lift up our teachers who are embracing the new curriculum and building their expertise to ensure success for all of our readers. Our high school musicians demonstrated their impressive musical talents at the Wisconsin School Music Association Soul and Ensemble Festival hosted by our very own Oshkosh North High School. The special event showcased both individual and group performances from talented musicians. A special shout-out goes to festival manager Bridget Duffy Alrick, Oshkosh North Choir Director and Musical Department Chair, whose leadership alongside our dedicated music staff and volunteers made this valuable performance opportunity possible for our students right in our hometown. Carl Traeger Elementary students recently immersed themselves in a day of play filled with activities that fostered creativity, collaboration, and active learning. A special event highlighted the school's commitment to helping students develop critical thinking skills and social connections while maintaining their enthusiasm for discovery. By intentionally incorporating fun into the educational experience, educators at Carl Traeger are nurturing not only academic growth, but also the social-emotional development that comes with meaningful play activities. Please join us. We're looking forward to hosting our annual strategic plan update and volunteer fair coming up on Thursday, March 20th at 6:00 PM at Vell Phillips Middle School. Following a brief presentation of our 2025 strategic plan, as well as an introduction of our new school-level key performance indicators, attendees will be able to directly interact with our principals and district leaders to explore volunteer opportunities and to learn more on how our community partnerships can contribute to our students' success from schools across the district. We invite everybody to join us and be part of this important work. We have less than three weeks, or we're less than three weeks away from the April 1st referendum vote. We've been actively engaging with voters across the community through informational sessions, Q&amp;A events, presentations at various community organizations, and connecting with residents at our winter farmer's market. We encourage all voters to attend one of our remaining scheduled sessions, visit our website, or contact us directly with questions to ensure that they understand the facts needed to make an informed decision. Most importantly, voters should recognize what their yes and no vote would mean for the students in our community, as both outcomes will have significant impacts in our district's future. And finally, just a schedule of where I've been able to spend my time over the last couple of weeks. So again, thanks, everybody, for their accommodations, and looking forward to continuing our work.
There's a lot going on. It's very exciting. Okay, Mrs. Niemann, referendum update.
Hello, everyone. Providing just a quick referendum update, sharing the latest work going on and informational resources. So as Superintendent Davis mentioned, our focus continues to be on getting out into our community, providing opportunities for folks to learn. Obviously, one piece of that is the information sessions that we're providing. A reminder, our next information session is actually happening tomorrow at South Park at 6:30 PM. So all are welcomed, and then the next one after that will be next week, Tuesday, March 18th, and that will be at Franklin Elementary. Everything's available on our website. As far as our engagement, again, in our efforts to just make sure folks have the facts and informed, and then also, most importantly, are making a plan to vote on April 1st, we'll have a postcard, our final postcard hitting mailboxes next week. And again, that has information on the scope of the referendum, and then encouraging folks to, again, make that plan to vote with early absentee or in-person absentee voting beginning next week, Tuesday, March 18th. So in addition to those resources, I just wanted to draw attention to the resources available on our website, recognizing that schedules are always extremely busy, and we get that folks don't always have an opportunity to come to us when we're hosting sessions, but we certainly want to make sure that information is convenient for them and they can learn and watch things from the comfort and the space that they have. So when navigating our homepage, referendum menu right from the homepage will get you to all of the resources available, so explaining what the referendum scope is. Easily click to see what the next information session is. And then one of the things I wanted to draw the public's attention to is just short informational videos that we put together from the voice of our staff that are living in the spaces and can speak to the needs and the impact. So those are available right from the homepage, and you can click into those. And again, that's just quick information, two to three minutes to hear about the scope. And I would say the latest of today is a feature with fifth-grade teacher, Kim Lawton, at Emmeline Cook, talking about the benefits of air conditioning in some of our schools. Further down the page, all of these sub-pages get you into a lot of information, so from if you want to be looking at the project details, tax impact, information sessions, like I said, background of how we got here, voting information, and then all the resources looking to the videos, as well as information that we've shared with our community. And then, as we've often discussed, continuing to update our frequently asked questions. At the top of the page, you'll see a featured question that, again, our focus is on just helping share information and what we're hearing out in the community and as we're engaging with folks. And then you can navigate and hopefully get any question answered. And if you still have questions, head back to that page, and you can easily reach us via email or a call to the office. Yes?
What kind of feedback are you getting from the community regarding the referendum? Are they excited for it, or what kind of questions are you getting most?
Yeah, I think it varies. Certainly, folks that are showing up, there's an interest in learning more about everything that's included. It obviously is a lot of information. So I think more often than not, we're just having people that are coming to learn, to ask questions. And I think I would say the questions really vary from whether you have students in the district, students at a school that will be benefiting, or, you know, maybe you're not directly connected with a school, but you want to have that touch base. So I would say it's a lot of things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Niemann.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
And now, social, academic, emotional, behavior screener, Sabers. Mr. Kemmerer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So a reporting note on Sabers. Sabers stands for Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener. So this is a screening tool that we use to gather data on social-emotional development of our students. So it makes up about 30% of our Safe and Healthy Schools domain. The assessment's conducted three times a year, once in fall, once in winter, and once in spring. And the survey itself contains two distinct components. So there's a Sabers component, which is a teacher rating scale, and then there is a My Sabers component, which is the student rating scale. So the teacher rating scale component is done in grades K through 5, and the My Sabers student reporting component is done in grades 2 through 12. So the ratings from the Sabers factor into three different domains. So there's a social behavior domain, an academic behavior domain, and an emotional behavior domain. And students are scored based on their level of risk. So there is high risk, some risk, and low risk. So we use this data in a lot of different ways. So our schools use it, individual student data, to identify students who might need additional supports in the form of like a SE group, which is like a group to build social or emotional-type skills. Schools combine this data with other data to identify other forms of intervention, so individualized interventions. We have a Rise Up program that supports students' mental health. So students who are high-risk might be looked at for additional mental health supports or resources if there's other information that supports that type of thing. And then our schools use this data to identify if there are certain classrooms or grade levels where there are abnormalities or spikes in scores to figure out how to provide different or better universal instruction or support in these areas. So in terms of what we saw in the most recent benchmark, which is our winter benchmark from this school year, for My Sabers, which is the student ratings, we had 78% of our students in the low-risk category, 19% in the some risk, and 3% in the high risk. And that stayed pretty stable or consistent over the last several benchmark periods. For the Sabers or the teacher ratings, we had 76% in the low risk, 18% in the some risk, and 6% in the high risk. And that is a slight improvement from our fall benchmarks for our Sabers or our teacher ratings. In terms of some trends that we've seen this year and in previous years, our teachers continue to score students with a higher percentage in the high-risk category and fewer in the low-risk category than what we see in the My Sabers or the student ratings. We continue to see some discrepancies by race. So in particular, our students who are black, two or more races, or Hispanic, tend to have fewer students in the low-risk category. fewer students in the low risk category, and more particularly in the some risk category, or tier-two areas are where we're seeing the biggest discrepancies for those groups. And then there continues to be interesting trends with our male and female students. So by and large, the, the ratings are fairly consistent when we look at MySABERS, but when we look at SABERS or the teacher ratings, our male students tend to be scored with far fewer in the low risk category, and almost twice as many in the high risk category when compared to our female students. So in terms of social emotional learning, what we've been doing or continuing to do this year, our district SEL leadership team continues to meet up on a quarterly basis, and then we have monthly meetings that are more checkpoints or touch-ins to, to see how we can better support the, the social emotional learning teams in our schools. So when we come together for our district meetings, those meetings are actually really helpful for our, our leaders in all of our schools to hear more about what's happening, because every school has their own flavor of social emotional learning beyond what we structure in for our 90-day district plans. So representatives from the schools are able to borrow some things that have been really successful in some schools, or to help generate ideas, which has been nice. We also have been working with our principals to help them feel more comfortable utilizing our SABERS data and our discipline data to help make more informed decisions in their buildings. So we've had a couple of sessions now with our administrators on desegregating their data. And then finally, we've been continuing to plan around our BJA Stop School Violence Grant that we, we're notified we received almost a million dollars to support school safety and social emotional learning. So we did hire a grant coordinator, Mr. William Green, who has been hard at work, starting to work toward the things that we set out to achieve in our grant. We've been starting to work on planning our school crisis response simulation, which will take place this summer in conjunction with our law enforcement and emergency response partners. And then we've been continuing to plan with Conscious Discipline, CISA-6, and other partners on some of our social emotional learning development.
Questions? Mrs. Smeltney?
I have a couple of questions, which I think came up in the fall when we talked about this too, but it sounds like you're considering, continuing to see patterns, both based off race and gender, of over identification by staff of some groups and under identification of others. And has any training been, and what, what does that mean, first of all? And has any training been done to attempt to counteract that, to, to make this a more, I don't know, valid or a more useful tool for us? And I guess what kind of training is happening, or what are we trying to do to better understand why these kind of discrepancies between self-identification and staff identification are happening?
Yeah, so in terms of some of the things we've been doing around race in particular, I know we've been continuing with our ICS work, that's being led by Dr. Coleman and Mr. Miller. And really, a lot of that work is around, you know, exploring biases and history of marginalization, and some of those pieces that we're hoping can continue to help support our staff in those areas. But really, I think the, the most useful component of the SABERS is, or the most powerful, is when our schools are able to break it down by classroom, grade level, and really zero in on those particular students that have the greatest needs, and then be able to provide either individualized or small group supports to really target either the academic behavior, social behavior, or emotional behavior that is the greatest needs for those individual students.
My, my other question is much broader of, can you remind me again of what the overall goal is of SABERS? Is it meant to stay stable? Is it meant to improve? Like, because from the reports that I've seen, it's not changed much.
Yeah.
But it is a KPI, correct?
Yeah, when you, when you think about social emotional learning, one of the challenges is it's something that's really hard to measure. You know, there's, there's not a, you know, standardized assessment that we can give to really gauge someone's level of social emotional learning. So really, the, the best and only way to do that, the most valid and reliable way, is through surveys or rating scales. So it's not a, a perfect way of doing it, but it's the best we got. And in terms of SABERS, like I said, it's something that, you know, even if we didn't have a district KPI, we would still utilize, because it does give us valuable information to go off of from a social emotional learning standpoint. But it is also a norm reference assessment. So when we think about, you know, what we would expect from a norm reference assessment, we would expect to see between 80 and 85% of our students in the low risk category, roughly 15% in the some risk, and 2 to 3% in the high risk. And we're not too far off of that. Ideally, we would want to see 0% in the high risk and 100% in the low risk. But, you know, in terms of what our, what our schools look at when they're assessing the, the health of their social emotional learning systems within their buildings, those are really the, kind of the guidelines they're looking at from a percentage standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Carolyn?
Did we apply for that grant, or did it just fall from the sky?
Yeah, we applied for that grant. I don't remember how many are given out nationally, but we were one of the few districts in the state of Wisconsin to receive it.
That's amazing, almost a million dollars. That's great. So the new coordinator is going to be looking at partnerships in the community, or I kind of missed that part.
Yeah, so there's a number of components of that grant that are really focused around social emotional learning and school safety. So he's been working with our Epcot team to plan school safety simulations. So we're really trying to figure out what is going to work best, or what's going to be the most useful for us from a simulation standpoint, whether that be an emergency response simulation at like Titan Stadium, or a potential bus accident, something like that, where we would have to cooperate with Winnebago County, OPD, other emergency responders to really figure out, you know, how to best support students who are impacted in those situations, just in case something like that would happen in real life. Along with that, continuing our partnership with Conscious Discipline to really continue to educate our, our staff, particularly our elementary teachers, working with CISA-6 in a number of areas around restorative practices. And there are a number of other pieces that are part of that grant that we're really excited about.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Let me try to phrase this the right way. So when we're using tools like this, we're trying to identify kids that we can get into a better place, right? And we see numbers based on that. One thing that I've been more interested lately in is how many students these programs identify and then help to have positive outcomes rather than negative outcomes. And I don't know how we quantify that, or how we look at that. I just feel personally like when we evaluate programs, a lot of times we look for anything that's wrong with them, rather than highlighting what's good about them. And I've tried to make it a focus of my own to look at both sides. So any way we can ever quantify that or share stories with the community about how, how the program is helpful?
I don't know, that's just something that I really like to see. When I come back, I think I could capture some of the great things that are happening in our schools around social emotional learning, and give you specific examples of some of the cool creative things that our, our schools are doing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Mr. Nihans, budget variance report. Good evening.
Tonight's report is through the month of February. So just a couple of highlights from, from the report you received. The district's operating funds continue to project out as a deficit for the end of year. I know I've been asked for a little bit of, some specifics on whether we can, what we are trying to cut back on, how are we trying to mitigate this. A part of this, this overage right now is also in our health plan. I took a more aggressive approach to budgeting the health plan this year. We had a very good last year for the health plan, so we were looking at somewhere between a 10% and a 20% reduction. For this year, I chose to be more aggressive and took a 20% reduction. We are tracking more towards that 10% range. So I was expecting us to be able to continue to see about a 10% decrease in expenses to claims in that plan from last year to this year, and our claims, at least currently, are staying more consistent with last year. So not quite getting the, the movement that we were, that I was expecting. The plan is still running very well. We've seen significant decreases in expenditures and how the plans performed over the last three years. It's just I took a little bit more of an aggressive approach this year. Also wanted to talk about the Fund 50 Food Service Plan. I know Mrs. Spiltnick had a question at the end of the meeting last month, and asked me for what, what more of a specifics were on the projected deficit. The projected deficit right now would be about a quarter of a million dollars for the food service fund, and included in your materials are six points for some of the reasons behind what's, what's going on with the food service. I'll just highlight a couple of them for you. Food costs are up 15% from last year. Again, we don't anticipate those are going to be coming down, but that will, we will budget additional money for next year, but that's, that's really impacting us right now. Also, something that the board probably hasn't heard before, but we receive commodities that we get to trade for as a government contract. That contract for us was reduced this year. It'll go back up next year, but it was reduced. And the suppliers we get our commodities from have had a really hard time with timing on how we receive some of our commodities. So some of our commodities we've had to delay, which causes us, and they're already on, items are already on the menu, so it's caused us to source those items at a more expensive cost locally to try to get them and keep them in the menu. So just the whole commodity system right now has caused us a significant increase for this year. The one highlight on your report that I do want to hit, that what we're trying to do to mitigate some of our loss, and hopefully not get to that quarter of a million point, is the staff, especially at the secondary level, the middle school through high school, have really been much more aggressive at trying to get student surveys, student input on how we can change menu, menu items, what menu items do they like that they want to see repeated a little bit more often, what menu items aren't going as well, and trying to get those off the menu to try to really boost our participation. The higher we get participation, the lower that end deficit number will be. So they are actively doing that every week to try to make sure that we can get maximum participation at, at all of the schools. Any questions from, from the report?
What do you mean by commodities? Is it like the staples of the basics?
Yep, so commodities is, is like its own government-like food supplier. So it's a wide range of items. We get fruit and vegetables. You get so many dollars to kind of cash in. So it ranges from, we get fresh fruit and vegetables from commodities. So that was in, those were items that we really struggled getting from there, so we had to source those differently. You get a variety of different forms of chicken that you can do typically. What we would do is buy those, buy the poundage of chicken we would get in like chicken nuggets, or like breaded chicken patties for sandwiches. There's different cheese items, cheese options you can do, and, and it's a whole, the contracts are very good, so you lock them in for a 18-month period. So you're getting them better than, especially when you have grocery store prices that are going drastically up right now. We've got that locked in for a longer period of time at a much better cost. The problem has become some of the suppliers within the commodity industry are kind of playing games on the supply and demand. So they know they're losing money on the commodities for what they are, so they hold them, and they can, and then you don't get them when you need them. And then they open it up like 60 days later and say, you got 30 days to use, 30 days to use these. So we don't have as much control with it. It's very good pricing, and you get a wide variety of, of items, but you lose that control.
Very interesting. Mrs. Carolyn?
I think I asked this question at the last meeting, and I totally forgot the answer. So forgive me, please, but the recreation department, the expenses are running slightly higher than they were this time last year.
Yep.
And I'm going to ask you why in a minute, but I'm wondering if the referendum passes and we are able to move the rec department into Perry-Tipler, if we'll see a decrease in expenses in terms of, you know, heat, all that kind of stuff, building efficiency.
I don't have the, enough information to, to answer that. I have not specifically looked at what our utility costs are at the old rec building we're in. Logically, I would think we would save money, but I, I don't, I don't have any.
Yeah, I caught you off guard. I shouldn't have emailed you before, but why are the expenses higher, do you think?
Right now, expenses are running a little higher. We've, we've increased programming. We did a boys volleyball intermural for high schools. We had 35 boys come out. That was something that we did that was new. We've done a lot of new programming at the rec to really try to boost the programs we have out in the community. I would anticipate whether the referendum passes or not in April, that we are going to continue to try to do new programming from the rec. Our costs will go up as we try to do that. That's, that's part of having and trying new, new programming. But they, they should be pretty close to break even. Again, maybe a, a small deficit is what I would, what I would expect.
But presumably, if we are able to relocate the rec department, we'll have like four basketball courts instead of just that little tiny one, so we'll probably have greater participation too, right?
Yes, their, their staff's already looking forward and hoping that, that come April 2nd, they can really plan for pickleball and enhanced, enhanced programming and that. They do pickleball at the old gym, but we're limited to two.
It's so small.
Two small courts, where they'd be able to expand that quite a bit over at Tipler.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just make one comment about the, the entrepreneurial spirit of the rec department? Of Dr. Eric's Skate Club is a partner with the rec department, and it was an incredible year this year with, the rec department is the group that often staffs the, the warming center at the nominee park, so it's a partnership between the school district rec department, the city of Oshkosh, and then Dr. Eric's Skate Club. And the rec department was terrific in doing that, but that would be an example of some things that they're doing as a benefit to the community that sometimes may, in the short term, have some cost to them.
Yes.
It's a great program, and they had over 850 skaters this year, with 350 of them using borrowed skates.
That's amazing.
It was a great year for them.
And obviously, we appreciate the, the donated skates, which, which is, which is very appreciated, but it is a very nice program. We really like that.
We're very proud of the partnership with that, of the school district, the city, and, and other partners.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mrs. Kiff Meyer, student involvement and fall/winter activities. Good evening.
So just a few highlights for the student involvement for fall and winter activities. The percent of high school students involved in one or more activities in the winter for 2024 was 56%, almost 57%, which was a 3% increase from the fall of 2024. Our high school participation in extracurricular was up over 16% from the winter of last year of 2023, so we've increased quite a bit. The district was able to close the gaps from the winter of 2023 to the winter of 2024 in race, social economic status, and English proficiency. The district also reduced gaps for students with disabilities participating in extracurricular activities by 2% from the fall of this year to the winter of this year, so that was a, a big celebration, since we only increased by 3%, so we were excited about that. that. Oshkosh West High School participation went up from the fall to winter for student involvement, where North had no significant change in school student participation. The gap between non-social economically disadvantaged and social and economically disadvantaged students closed by over 5% from the winter of '23 to the winter of '24. And the gap between our non-ESOL students and our ESOL students was also closed by over 14%. So there were some good things. There's also, if you looked at the graphs, there's also a lot of work that we still need to do to be able to increase participation at North and then overall close our gaps between our different student populations.
Can you give us just some ideas of what you will be doing at North and some of the action steps?
Yeah, so we're looking to, we're involving our athletic directors. Currently, right now, we're in that process to figure out what our students want that we're not offering, to like strategically go out and ask them what they want versus waiting for them to come to us, which has kind of been our approach. They've always had the ability to request a club or an activity, but we need to know what they want and we need to put those things in place, so we need to strategically go out and ask them for that. Another thing that we're doing is trying to reduce any barriers that we are seeing. You know, over time, historically with the district, we tried to reduce financial barriers for our families. We reduced the athletic fee from 50 to 33 this year. There's fees associated with clubs as well, for example, like ski club or potentially the play. And we're trying to now bring that to the board in April to maybe reduce those fees or eliminate those because what we actually collect is not significant. And so just by having that fee, we think that's a detractor for some kids to even sign up. If they see the fee is associated with something, they may not even sign up if that's a barrier for them. So we want to try to remove those as well. So those are a few things that we're working on. We also want to do an overall campaign to get out to families on what we offer. Yes, it's listed in our course guide, it's on our website, but people have to find that, right? And they need to know where to look for that. So we need to do a better job of getting that information, especially to our incoming families, as well as our incoming ninth graders, so that it's not so like scary or confusing as they enter the world of high school.
Did we get Madrigals added to?
We did.
Yay.
Okay. One thing that I'm thinking, since we were talking about the rec department, is so many kids, I see a lot of kids that are in high school, utilize the rec department programs, especially because only, the reality is, is only so many kids can play varsity basketball. Only so many kids can play varsity volleyball. And a lot of kids that aren't able to or don't go that path, you know, they go and they play in the rec and they like it a lot. I see a lot of great photos and posts and kids are super happy and they come up with their own team names. So I think that participation is, you know, can be broader, you know what I mean? And there can be growth amongst both of those, both of those entities through partnering just because I see it, you know, like through kids posting and whatnot. That's my thought.
Mr. Wright, are you suggesting potentially expanding what we consider student involvement include our intermurals, potentially with our rec department in our data?
And if you do that, think of them as school activities and how they roll.
Yes.
I mean, because there's a ring around Oshkosh North basketball team right now. That's one, two years in a row, but I think that is a very good point, Chris, of the more we can, and that incentivizes better programming at the rec department as well.
There's just such an opportunity there and it's being, it's being utilized, you know, and it makes sense, you know, like the high school sometimes is unrealistic, especially with the way our facilities are right now, just because we don't have space to have three or four teams at each grade level, you know, like that's just an awfully tough thing to do. But rec fills, and that's even better for a lot of students. I mean, like you don't have to, some of the pressure of getting cut from some of these higher-level teams, and we don't have a lot of them, but anyhow.
Other examples, though, I just saw a post yesterday from the rec department, there's like a coding program that's starting next week that's for middle schoolers. Maybe this is a time where we start to think through how we can get rec department activities more integrated into our natural programming.
Yeah, it's a natural partnership already, so.
Yes.
Definitely. Thank you for that.
I mean, I don't disagree with Mr. Wright's suggestion. If we do that for the next couple of years, please present the data both ways and the KPI. Let's adjust it to reflect the new addition of.
So I can't celebrate a huge growth next year?
You can, but then it's breaking you down.
And page two.
Thanks, Dr. Hess, for that.
When we talk about sports, do you include, I think it's a club sport, I know it's not a WIAA sport, the bowling?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Ski club is included, like all of our clubs or activities that are recognized in our course guide are included in this, so it doesn't have to be just athletics. We added Madrigals as well this year and jazz band, just because of the amount of outside performances they're doing outside of the day. You heard earlier from Ryan that 30 events were put on in the winter for our Madrigals. That's a significant amount of time outside of school, longer than some of our seasons, really, so.
Thank you for your report. Well, I'm sorry, Mrs. Carolyn.
No worries, no worries. Transportation can also be a barrier. One reason I didn't play sports in both elementary and middle school is because I knew my parents would never be able to pick me up because they were both working or they worked nights. What kind of things are we looking at to eliminate transportation barriers? I know for a while, we were, the city bus partnership was helping. Are there other things that can kind of help our students get to and from practices and games?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point that you made. It's not something that we specifically have investigated yet, but I do know that, as I lived in the high school world, for some kids, when our buses stop running at 6:00 PM and our practices will go later than that, and we don't have another mode of transportation. So potentially, I can talk with Drew, our budget guy, to get like a late-run bus type thing that potentially could go. So that's something we can look into.
Thank you.
Yes. So looking at Oshkosh West, well, in particular, looking at white students versus non-white students' participation. West has made some huge gains, North not so much. And in general involvement, West is excelling. What is the magic ticket that's going on at West that's not going on at North?
Demographics.
I'm sorry.
That's not, I mean, that's not an excuse.
No, I mean socio-economically disadvantaged.
Well, what's the magic ticket? Or is there a magic ticket?
Well, if I knew what it was, I would replicate it, so I don't know that there is one.
Are there programs, is there, what's the difference between the two schools? What's going on for programming and involvement in the whole school, in the schools or in the school climate?
Yeah.
It's different.
So most of the clubs and activities that we offer are the same, except for there are some uniquenesses, like, for example, DECA is something that is very highly sought after at West and not at North, but Skills USA is highly sought after after North and not West, so they don't offer those. So in terms of what are they doing, we're tapping into West to work with North as well and our A.D.s to look at that.
One of the things that came up in the listening session was we've got a number of families that have a student at West and a student at North. And so looking into a focus group with those families to say, like, tell us about your experiences. Are there differences with, you know, eighth grade orientation came up as just a difference, a different experience and some things that we can learn from each other from the schools? So not that that's a magic ticket necessarily, but to get a better, you know, read on the compare and contrast between the two.
I mean, that might be partially my point. I can tell you that I have observed, just being on the boards, being more at West now than I was initially at North as a parent, I've observed there are differences in different outreach that is done. And I'm not saying it has to look exactly the same, but we should be, I mean, even you gave the example of trying to do a calendar at West that had been started at North for parental communications. Like, the more that we can put some effort behind getting these more equalized would be incredible.
And we share the wisdom, right? Like, we want to be working together. We're one district, so it's about what we offer for our students.
What is the economically disadvantaged rates at both schools?
I don't know those, like specifically off the top of my head, so I don't.
I'm just wondering if it's big or small.
I, again, I don't, I don't want to, I do not want to.
I'm catching you off guard.
I think what's important to point out is that no matter what that is.
It doesn't matter.
We need to have better consistency, better communications, and that, and that's what public education does, is it should level the playing field at its best.
Yeah.
And that's what we continue to strive for.
Yes, and I would agree with that. Our discussion in listening session was very eye-opening. Everything is black and white difference from West and North, you know? And the graduations are different, the booster clubs are different, the volunteers are different, there's more participation. So we all agreed in our listening session that we need to close that gap.
And I think the goal is to grow both sides, right? So let's use what we have.
Yeah.
And I, just one last thought, and I know I've talked a bunch already, but I think we have to continually evolve. You know, like, kids are still kids and they're a lot like when we were kids, but they have a lot of different technological advantages and, or maybe advantages or not advantages, or however we want to look at it, but the things that they're interested in are different than traditional things that we were interested in. I mean, AI, like esports, like all these different extracurricular things that they like and enjoy. We have to evolve, you know, evolve as a school district so that we can meet, you know, the needs and desires of the next generation and how extracurriculars fits into that. I'm not suggesting this or whatnot, but some private schools in the valley recently have built out these private schools. These hot, yeah, these really big e-gaming deals. And my wife was like, because our son's really into computers and e-gaming and that kind of stuff, and my wife showed my son a picture of it, and he was like, whoa, you know, like, and I'm just saying, that's how things are evolving. You know, like, we can set the same foundations and expectations and things that we want to teach kids to become good adults within those things, but there's different avenues, you know?
Yeah, I think we can't be fearful of losing participation in one, one activity by adding another, and I think sometimes that's been our mindset a little bit, so we need to break that down, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great discussion. Is robotics included in this?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
And there are scholarships for esports for college to Mr. Wright, so don't discourage gaming.
I'm pretty sure there's esports stuff offered by the rec department, at least there has been in the past.
Good part.
Didn't know I was such a big advocate for the rec department. Apparently today. Okay, and now we have our long-range library media plan by Mr. Schmidt. Ms. Rosensky.
Good evening, everybody. So we're here to present to the board an annual, or a long-range plan for the next three years. This is something that is a part of DPI's requirements for, for us to bring a long-range plan to you, and this is something that gets approved every, every three years. So if you remember, you probably did this like previously in 2022. So Terry has put a lot of work into preparing this report, so I'd love for her to talk a little bit more about our goals and what we're hoping to accomplish with the program over the next few years.
All right, so I'm Terry Rosensky, and Library Media Coordinator for the district. And so our plan is, has the three different areas to it, a little bit of an overview, and then it's broken down into like a needs assessment that was contributed to by all sorts of different stakeholders. And then the most important part of the plan, in my opinion, is our goals. So our first goal is to increase awareness and understanding of the library's resources and services that support student learning and achievement among students, faculty, and parents. Our second goal is to improve the consistency of practices across all library locations as demonstrated by increased positive feedback on self-reviews and observations. And our third goal is to examine our purchase database use and establish steps to increase our use or discontinue the service and to identify an underutilized database to increase use by 20% as measured by our usage statistics compared to the previous year.
So again, like the, the purpose of this is we receive state funding and we, to utilize that most effectively. Terry's done a really good job of surveying staff, finding out what people need, and then setting these goals and priorities for ourselves. So you have a full copy of the, of the additional, like the entire report in your board materials if there are any questions or if there's anything that we can discuss further, we'd be happy to address those.
It's not a question, but again, I think I made a comment on this committee that the presentation is a really cool document for people to look through in it, just to see kind of how library services and media centers have been evolving and will hopefully continue to evolve and so. If people are interested, please take a look at that in the board materials.
Have you noticed at Menominee increased usage of the library just because it's such beautiful space now and so welcoming?
That's a great question. Um, I, yeah, that's, again, I did not come prepared with specific library usage statistics, but I definitely have had great feedback for how, while that looks. And we even just got our final piece of the equipment in for our circulation station came in this week. So there have been definitely some really great improvements there, but I don't have direct like circulation stats to.
That's fine. And VEL is a beautiful library as well. I think that's been great to let the natural light in.
Thank you.
I just wanted to compliment you on your community partnerships. I think that it's really great that we're working in partnership with the library, Arts Corps especially, Police Department. Are there any other organizations that are in the works to collaborate with or?
Yeah, we have, I think expanding community partnerships in general is definitely something that we're looking for, and especially my focus next year is to try to bring in some like author visits. It's been a while since we've had some significant authors visit Oshkosh. So I just submitted with a partnership with the Public Library and Arts Corps, a proposal to try to bring a large-name author to Oshkosh, hopefully in the fall. But yeah, so definitely we are reaching out and trying, especially when it comes to like maker spaces, to partner with different businesses and different opportunities that we can provide to our students in our, in our libraries. So if there, you know, members of the public who are interested in partnering, you know who to reach out and contact, because we're definitely open to more partnerships.
Awesome, thank you.
Dr. Herzog.
I want to say I'm impressed with your report in terms of its breadth and depth. I just have a couple of budget questions. I believe I asked at the Education Committee meeting about the budget relative to materials, and I know that the Common School Fund, which our dollars we get from the state have to a large extent supported the materials that are found in the library. What other budget support does the district provide for our library media services?
Yep, great question. So a lot of the materials that, as you, as you pointed out, a lot of the materials that we use in the library budget do come from those common school funds, but there's, there are restrictions on certain, on the things that we can purchase with that. So at the district level, a lot of the budget items that we'll be, we'll be putting in are for things like consumables, if we need to get materials for our maker spaces, if we need labels, book binding, you know, things to repair the materials that we have. Like, all of those kinds of things are really what we, what we budget for locally. In addition to that, like there, there are certain times we, like if we, if we want to expand our collection in a way that is not supported by common school funds, we'll also allocate a few funds for, for those things as well.
And then we also reach out to other organizations, Celebrate Education just provided some grants to our libraries, specifically with like consumable pieces for maker spaces.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now we'll move on to committee reports. It looks like this evening we just have the Education Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The Education Committee met on Wednesday, March 5th at 7:30 in the boardroom. There was no one present for public forum. I will cite a disclaimer in that this is a lengthy report. I'm not going to read everything on this report, but you can find it on our website. We had three rather significant agenda items. One had to do with the library media plan that we just heard about, another one was the calendar committee, and another one was student engagement and behavior discipline. So you just heard from Jason and Terry who presented at the Education Committee meeting on March 5th, and the board will be voting on this plan later this evening. Dr. Coleman updated the committee regarding the calendar committee. There had been some questions at the last board meeting regarding the proposed calendar for 2025, '26, and the draft for 2026, 2027. Dr. Coleman requested that the committee members, except for administrators, determine a question. a question regarding the changes that they would like to see in the 2025-2026 calendar, and then to cast their votes. There was a unanimous consensus that August 25th should be a flex day where staff could complete their required HR or human resources module training. The midwinter break that was scheduled for February 20th, 2026, would now become an instructional day for students in exchange for having the last day for teachers on Friday, June 5th, 2026, rather than on Monday, June 8th, 2026. And the final day of school for students in the upcoming school year would be Thursday, June 4th, 2026. For the most part, it appeared that these changes satisfied some of the concerns from the various employee groups. Moving forward, the committee will continue to be engaged in the process, and surveys will be created by the committee and sent out to staff's email addresses. The next topic was student engagement and behavior discipline. The conversation began by emphasizing that this is the start of the conversation regarding behavior and engagement. There are other disciplinary measures that will be reviewed, such as in-school suspension and restorative meetings. Dr. Coleman explained that the graphs that were provided at the meeting in the report do not show the full picture of the impacts and realities of exclusionary discipline practices such as suspensions. However, suspensions are down while disparities in risk ratios have increased, as shown by the data. It is important to note that less than half of this district's students who identify as Black or two or more races have been suspended one or more times. There were four areas of emphasis that followed. One was acknowledging the issue. The board and administration recognize that racial disproportionality exists in student discipline within the district, and we are committed to addressing it with both transparency and urgency. Discipline data shows disparities that must be honestly scrutinized to ensure that all students are treated fairly, even if they make choices that warrant consequences. Another topic was focusing on prevention over discipline. Rather than solely reacting to behaviors, the primary focus needs to be on prevention, ensuring students have the support, skills, and accountability they need to be successful in school. Reducing suspension starts with addressing the root causes of behaviors and creating environments that foster high expectation, support, and belonging. A third topic was building skills and relationships. When students have the academic, social, and emotional skills to navigate school successfully, they are less likely to engage in disruptive behaviors. Trusted relationships with adults and positive peer influences in school are critical. When students feel seen, heard, and valued, they are less, they are more likely to engage positively in their learning environment. A strong sense of belonging and meaningful engagement in the school community significantly reduces the likelihood of disruptive behaviors. A fourth topic then was taking action. While analyzing discipline data is important, efforts must also focus on what is within the district's control, such as creating positive, inclusive school environments that proactively support all students. The district is committed to implementing strategies that promote positive behavior, restorative practices, and proactive approaches to foster student learning and leadership. This work requires the collective effort of educators, families, and the broader community to ensure that all students have the opportunity to thrive. There were several issues that came up from members of the board. One was holding staff accountable, not being centered on what adults would do, but centered on what students do. How do we engage students in solving this problem as well? It was noted that the district is looking into mentoring with UW-Oshkosh and using a grant to partner with community organizations, as there is a definite correlation between literacy engagement and behaviors. The district is currently working to see what barriers are preventing students from being involved in extracurricular activities, as Mrs. Kiffmeyer just reported. Concern was expressed about how data are being measured. Another concern was that many times parents don't know that they have the option to appeal when their child is disciplined. Dr. Coleman stated that next steps include a draft report on what a comprehensive plan would look like. He will be requesting more data on in-school suspensions and other discipline, as well as the school's culture and school climate. Discussion will then take place on school partnerships. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 2nd, at 7:30 in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to non-agenda public forum. We have one speaker this evening. Public comments will be limited to those reside in Oshkosh area school district or have children attending the district. For safety purposes, people providing their public comments will need to state the city they reside in, not their specific address. And this is non-agenda-related public forum, and tonight we have Mallory Schneider-Berschbach.
My name's Mallory Schneider-Berschbach, and I reside in the city of Oshkosh. I'm speaking tonight regarding the upcoming referendum on April 1st. My family's going to be directly impacted by the referendum, and we're voting yes. We see the value in updating our current facilities along with building a new middle school. Some people have expressed concerns about the new middle school being a so-called mega school, and in reality, the new middle school has a planned capacity of 680 students, which is far under the capacity of some other regional middle schools. I do not have concerns for my son attending this projected new middle school, but I do have concerns if he would have to attend South Park Middle School as it stands today. This is more than just putting up a shiny new building. The new middle school is desperately needed. If you've taken the time to tour South Park or to watch the videos that the district has made available to the public, it's easy to see that this school has surpassed its lifespan. ADA accessibility is also severely lacking, and our students, staff, and community as a whole deserve accessibility to every district building. I am asking the public to take the time to read district resources, obtain your information from reliable and transparent sources, and to vote on April 1st. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no one this evening for agenda-related public forums, so we'll be moving on to the workshop. Mrs. Kiffmeyer. And the workshop is College Credit or Work Experience.
Do you have Vicky Puller, our, she was in the commentary, or slide? Our career in tech ed coordinator to join us as well, or Chair Stuckey?
One of the things I want to point out for the board is, this is our first opportunity to look at a little bit different structure with our reports, really trying to be more consistent with the strategic plan, structure of looking at our KPIs, our goals, and then to be able to work strategies and actions in. So one, I just want to shout out Mrs. Kiffmeyer for just her being the first one up in this process and developing a template. It's not, it's not the, it's a 1.0 version as we move forward. So we'll refine this as we go, but again, really trying to make sure that we can get alignment and some direction from strategic plan strategies to what the actions are. The workshops are the opportunities for us to dig in and provide some insight for the board and for the community on what actions are happening, and that'll be evident tonight through Jack and through Vicky's work. So with that, I'll kick it over to Jack.
So another was be kind, no. Okay, so I'm excited to share the work of our teachers and our staff, especially Vicky and her team, for what we've engaged in and will continue to engage in over the next year, involving our KPI with college credit and work experience. As you know, our vision, mission, and values is what guides what we do each and every day, and this KPI, I think, truly embodies our mission, enriching our community by supporting our students to lead empowered lives, giving them the experiences that they need while they're still in the safety of being in high school, especially when we get to our work experience pieces. That's really important so they're ready to launch into that next piece. So our strategic plan falls within the core, or our KPI falls within the core area of learning and academics, and the real key to this, to me, is why this matters. You know, there's a lot of emphasis on standardized test scores, and yes, that's important, but it doesn't always provide an accurate representation of our students' potential and life goals. Like, the global economy, today's students are driven by hope, streams, ideas, and innovations. They should not be reduced or just defined by a single test score, and that's what I think is so exciting about this KPI, is we get to go on all different areas in terms of supporting what our students want. So our 2025 strategic plan rating for the KPI of college credit and work experience was a three-star rating. We were specifically at a 58% of our graduating seniors who engaged in at least one advanced placement course, dual-credit, youth apprenticeship, work-based learning, or industry-recognized credential experience. So I do want to make a note here, because earlier, I just think it's important, earlier you may have seen that we were a four-star rating, we fell in like 72% range. What we found when we did some digging, especially the work that Vicky and her team did to align with DPI and all the audit work that we did, is we came up with a really big issue in our reporting system, that our infinite campus system did not have our dual-credit courses accurately checked, so when we pulled our data, they were pulling courses that are not dual-credit courses anymore, which is why there's a big difference between the 58% and the 72%. So we have cleaned that up. Really proud of that work. It was a lot of work to do that.
I just want to say, the DPI, the person we were working with for the DPI told us that they were proud of our district for our work that we did cleaning this up, so.
It's something that we can do on an annual basis.
Correct. And so we will now, now we have the systems and structures in place to make sure that we are checking our dual-credit and our courses that we're pulling our data from to make sure that we don't get into this position again. The other snafu with our data was, if you look at what the actual KPI says, which it is of graduating seniors, so our total number that was polled was not our graduating seniors from the 2024 class. It was all students who would have been enrolled to graduate, not necessarily graduate. So that was also the key, key area to that piece as well. So this is a three-year comparison, and remember that our KPI is the district-level work, so this is why it's by the district and what we offer. So what's interesting about this specific KPI is there's five distinct areas that we're tracking in order to make sure that we reach that goal. And so dual-credit enrollments, advanced placement courses, youth apprenticeship, work-based learning opportunities, and industry-recognized credentials. The key here that I just want to draw, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but we have our highest dual-credit youth apprenticeships and industry-recognized credentials we've had over the last three years, which is really, truly a testament to all of our teachers and our staff and the work that they do to bring kids what they're looking for. We still have a lot of work to do, but I do think that it's showing that we're investing in this KPI, and we have a plan to get there as well. So I think the other thing that is really important to note on this is, this is great, right? The data's great, our KPI is really important to us as a district, but how does it impact? How does it truly impact our students? How has it impacted the lives in our community and the people that we serve, right, which is our students and our families? And I'm really excited to introduce Erin Ball, who is a current parent of an OASD student and also had graduating students from OASD, and she's going to share her parent perspective on how this KPI has impacted her children and her family.
Hi, good evening. Yep, so I'm here tonight to give you a parent perspective on the impact of the OASD's commitment to college and career readiness. All three of my sons have been through the youth apprenticeship program, and it has been instrumental in their development. Our oldest son, Ryan, began the apprenticeship program in 2018 with Oshkosh Corp. There, he learned advanced engineering skills, which otherwise would have been hard to learn anywhere else. Following the apprenticeship program, Ryan enrolled at Michigan Tech University, and being able to talk about his past work experience as a freshman in college really set him apart from his other college peers, and he was able to obtain multiple internships that built off of each other, including three additional internships at Oshkosh Corp., Mercury Marine, and Marathon Petroleum out in Los Angeles. He now has returned to Oshkosh Corp. as a full-time rotational engineer. Eric, our middle son, also did an apprenticeship with Oshkosh Corp. in engineering. His program was interesting because he was an apprentice during COVID. At the time, the way that the schools were set up, he was able to complete the majority of his schoolwork at home, and then go into the office and work for many hours in the afternoon. Because of this, he gained very valuable experience and also made a lot of money that he was able to put toward his college education. Eric took many dual-credit classes and graduated with upward of 15 credits that applied to UW-Lacrosse. After his apprenticeship, he took on an internship with Oshkosh Corp. in software engineering, and while in college, in his junior and senior year, he actually was able to work remotely to continue the projects with the autonomy and active safety team. In LaCrosse, only 5% of current college students are completing internships during school, and he is one of them. Since Oshkosh Corp. and this school district gave him this opportunity, he is much more valuable to the employers as he's graduating in May. He's now looking to continue working in software or test engineering roles, and he's had multiple offers to choose from because of this experience. Our youngest son and current Oshkosh West student, Kevin, had a unique opportunity by starting with the Oshkosh Marine Supply under the direction of Phil James. He worked there as an apprentice the summer of his junior year, and then on a work release during his junior year, during the school year. As a graduating senior, Kevin's currently working as an engineering apprentice with Oshkosh Corp. Recently, he was awarded the College Career and Community Readiness Scholarship from the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. Kevin hopes to continue working for Oshkosh Corp. as an intern while he is in college. This youth apprenticeship program has fundamentally shaped each of my boys in ways that went far beyond what traditional classroom education could provide. While their standard high school curriculum was very valuable, it was their guided youth apprenticeship experiences that truly transformed their understanding of themselves and their potential. The program taught them to apply math, science, and English concepts to real workplace challenges and expectations. The networking and professional skills that they developed through this program succeeded anything available in a traditional classroom setting. We appreciate the individual opportunity that each of them had during their time with the Oshkosh School District. I hope that the program maintains and grows stronger as the years progress. It benefits our children, our community, and our businesses in the area, and we thank you for the opportunity that the Oshkosh School District has given them.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. Yeah, absolutely. And this is really why the work matters, right? The impact that we've had for our students, our families, and our community. So thank you again, Erin, for taking the time to share that with all of us. So now that you've heard like the exciting part, right, that moment that encapsulates the work that we do, here's our goals for college credit and work experience goals. Our one-year goal, so one year from today, our goal would be that we would move from the 58% to the 62% of graduating seniors engaged in at least one advanced placement, dual-credit, youth apprenticeship, work-based learning, or industry-recognized credential experience. In three years, or really 2028, because we would already be a year out, we would want to be at the 70% mark, and then by 2033, our goal would be to be at at least 80%, but would be wonderful if we had every one of our graduating seniors engaged in one of these experiences.
Can I just ask, so when you said 62%, you were saying that those are today's seniors, right?
So it'll be the 2025 class, correct.
Okay, thanks.
So in order to accomplish our goals, right, we need to have some strategic planning that goes in place, and we need to talk about what that looks like. So how will we reach those goals? Through six targeted strategies that align to our five key areas of work experience. And so before we actually take a closer look at what those strategies are, I want to make sure that everybody understands what those targeted strategies mean. I think it's important to understand what is dual-credit. Not everybody knows what that language is. We use it often, but I think it's important to share with everybody what that means. So dual-credit is college credit while you're still in high school. So you're earning high school credit and college credit at the same time. It could be two-year, towards a two-year degree or a four-year degree. Our advanced placement courses, when you take an advanced placement course, you have the opportunity to take the advanced placement exam, and if you do well enough on that exam, what you're able to do then is earn college credit through those exams that can be applied to any university. Our, well, most universities, I should never say any because we know how that works, right? Our, our next key area that we'll be talking about is advisory boards. And this is really the grounding work that Vicky has done and really worked really hard on. And what the advisory board is, is a business partnership and a partnership with our higher education institutes, where they came in to help advise our teachers on what students need at the next level, whether it's the business or within post-secondary opportunities. And so, we're using that information to guide what courses we're offering, what pathways we offer, what can we do for that. Our next one is the student-centered coaching cycles. I think oftentimes you hear student-centered coaching around math and literacy, but it's strategically using our instructional support coach at the high school level, as well as Vicky, going into our agriculture classes or our CTE classes and supporting our teachers based on the data that we're seeing from our students. And that's something that's very new, that we haven't necessarily done in our non-core areas. The fifth one is our youth apprenticeship opportunities. As you heard from Erin, it's a paid experience where students reach proficiency on defined occupational competencies. So, they not only are getting paid, but then they're being scored or graded on those proficiencies for that area. And then the last area is the industry-recognized credentials. And these are certificates, credentials, or licenses that are recognized for skill attainment that our students leave high school with. So, an example of that would be like our CNA course. You can be a certified CNA before you leave, and that gives them that skill attainment to start in that next level for whether it's an RN or whatever that happens to be.
I will say, just before you go on and get into the actions, I think, you know, just looking at the depth and the breadth of what we can offer, you know, we feel like as a school district, this is our, one of our differentiators. Like our ability to be able to, to cover a broad range, and because of our size, we can provide that. We really, it's something that's really important for us to be able to continue to develop as we're, as we're moving forward. So, just wanted to be able to point that out before we get into some of the actions.
So, the, those six areas are those key areas that we're focusing on for next year. And so, in that first area of dual-credit and advanced placement, the actions that we can take from now until next year at this time. And as Molly had pointed out, it's really for our graduating seniors. So, some of this work has obviously already been started and been in place so that we're capturing some of that work and will continue through the end of the year and launch us into next school year as well. So, the actions that we can take, attain to use that one-year goal of 62% would be aligning our courses for the same maximums that mirror Fox Valley Technical College. And so, that's unique because we know that our class size and financial impact are a correlation, right? But we want to make sure that we're mirroring those for our dual-credit opportunities in Fox Valley Tech. So, we've committed to run some of those courses at a lower enrollment so that we can continue to give them the same experience that they would get if it was at Fox Valley Tech. The second action that we will align to and work on this year is identifying and research capstone experiences, not just in CTE, but also in science and math. We will also enhance student and parent awareness of what Start College Now is, which is our ability to allow students to take Fox Valley Tech courses when they've exhausted all of our courses that we offer, when they have an area of interest, and then Start College, or Early College Credit, which was our partnership with UWO. And one of the keys with the actions of that is being, it's always been there. We've always offered this as part of our board policy, but being really strategic to make sure our families know this opportunity is there and set them up for that experience. And then the last action in dual-credit and advanced placement is making sure that we're surveying our students around their course interests to be able to add to our AP courses. This is probably the area I would say we're weakest in. Truthfully, we only offer seven AP courses right now currently in our high schools, and that's with the addition of one that we're starting in the fall of 2025, so.
Excuse me, what academic preparation do our teachers need in order to teach an AP class?
Oftentimes, they will take, there's courses that are offered for those AP courses in the summer. They will take, they will engage in that professional development to be prepared for that. And then there's a whole network of partnerships that they do who also teach those courses. So, they network through that professional development.
Great, thank you.
So, you just heard a whole lot of information, and we only really hit dual-credit and advanced placement. And so, what's unique about this KPI, and I think is, will continue to be unique about this KPI, is the heavy emphasis that CTE has within this KPI. So, besides dual-credit, CTE is heavily influenced on the other five. So, I'm going to turn that over to Vicky to share a little bit about that.
Hi, good evening, everyone. As Jackie said, while several departments contribute to our dual-credit and AP, career and technical education is unique in, in that, right? Like, we are designed for students to launch their future into their career preparation, whether that be inching into the workforce right after graduation, pursuing a two-year degree or a four-year degree. And so, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold and I'm on day six, and so, please be kind as I stop and cough. Our department really, the career and tech department really is five different departments. And we meet collaboratively as a group monthly. So, we have health science, technology and engineering, family, consumer science, business, and agriculture. And within each of our departments, we have developed distinct pathways with opportunities for students to prepare themselves for each of those entry points, each of those three entry points that I have discussed before. Health science is a little different for us because that's actually subsumed within the science department. But we do have a science teacher who has become duly licensed in career and technical education. And she is now, she now travels between north and west and is growing our health science department. Yeah, so.
And then, within the departments are the pathways, the distinct pathways that we've had.
Correct. And so, last year when I was here, I had shared with you the courses that we had developed for each pathway, and those are public-facing documents on our website. And they are actually now in our course, course guide. And I will tell you, they're posted at many of our middle schools as well, just to provide students with that opportunity to know, if this is my hope and dream, what are the classes I can take in high school that will help me get there?
So, the second action that we can take, so we talked about dual-credit and advanced placement. This is specifically tied to our cables or career-based learning opportunities. And you can see from the slide that we have career-based learning opportunities heavily that started and will continue throughout this year in tech and engineering. And our students engaged in local 39 operating engineers actually worked with them and engaged with them. They will participate in Gearbox Lab residency, which is new. They will also tour aviation pathways with EAA Basler Turbo Conversion, Sonic Aircraft, and Fox Valley Tech, and will visit Castle Pierce for an engineering tour. So, besides the first piece in tech and engineering with our local engineers, all those are still to come this year. Another career-based learning opportunity, which is really, really important for our students to engage in with the family and consumer science, is they will be attending the Pro Start Expo hosted by the Restaurant Association. And they'll be touring UW-Ashkosh Education Department in health sciences. They already took a field trip to the Wisconsin EMS Association. They toured UW-Ashkosh Health Services Facility. And then Bellin College came in to do a health science presentation to get our kids a little bit more aware of what other opportunities are there besides a doctor and a nurse, right? So, I think that's important. And then agriculture also will be taking field trips to the dairy farm, fish hatchery, and greenhouse management facility.
Yeah, so, so, thank you, Jackie. Our, our departments, this has been our focus this year, is implementing career-based learning experiences for our students, which are opportunities for our students to learn about careers, explore careers, go out and plan for those careers. And so, the beginning of our year, we began with a networking breakfast that we worked, the Chamber of Commerce helped us launch in September. And this was an opportunity where about 40 different businesses came to us during our collaboration time and worked with us on, oop, where are we doing here?
I just went to the.
Oh, oh, where, oop, I mean.
This whole breakfast.
Right. And so, with those business partnerships, we were able to launch a plethora of cables this year. And so, thank you, Jackie, for pointing those out. In addition to that, we engaged in some universal career-based learning experiences. Again, also in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. What you see is actually from last May was our senior talent track, where we collaborated with our high school counselors and some area human resource specialists. SHRM helped us prepare our students with resumes and interview skills. And then they attended a senior-only hiring event with area employers that was also staffed by SHRM representatives that did guided application. We had guided application cafes. For many of the students, this is the first time that they ever completed an online application. So, that was a huge success that we are continuing this May as well. Last fall, this past fall, we also provided a universal cable, and that was the FutureU Career Expo. Again, we collaborated with the middle school counseling team to help prepare our students with the knowledge of what are our different career pathways. And then they had the opportunity to go and explore those careers with area business folks. And we timed this so that they would be able to go back to their schools and start scheduling, right? And so, then, so, they've learned about careers, and now they have an understanding of what classes they can schedule during their high school career.
So, our third set of actions have to do with our advisory boards that I talked about was the partnership between businesses and higher institutions. We launched this year tech and engineering, family and consumer science, and health sciences. And that will continue into next year as well. And then we plan to add on our business department to have their first advisory board to really get those partnerships up and going.
So, I'd like to thank Jackie for the flexibility of using our professional development time during, in this way. And so, we utilized our Friday collaboration to bring our business partners again to our teachers. And so, we launched our Technology and Engineering Advisory Board in February. We had close to 30 area businesses, again, focusing on manufacturing, construction, transportation, STEM, and construction. And from that, as Jackie had said, we were able to really curate a wealth of information on how we need to revise our pathway courses so that they continue to remain relevant for the hopes and dreams of our students. Again, we have our health science teacher, who has been working with a wide variety of organizations. Here, we pictured here with, with Affinity as part of her advisory work.
And then we already talked about the link to Learn, and then this is our family and consumer science as well.
Right. And our family and consumer sciences have really been leaning into our partnership with GoEDC to expand what family and consumer science looks like. And so, so really, as we are emerging as a department that is developing not just foods, but culinary into the managerial roles. We are growing our education pathways. We currently have a assisted childcare pathway in family and consumer science, and we are growing that to a K-12 pathway as well. Really looking to grow our own teachers in a perfect world. And then finally, really launching what was what we would traditionally consider our sewing courses into fashion and design courses. I'm really looking to do partnerships with area interior designers as well. Again, mirroring the relevancy of our labor market needs.
So, Jack, as we, as we go through four, five, and six, if we can get like a high-level overview, and then we can open it up for questions.
Yep. So, we talked about the actions already for student-centered coaching. That's intensive, strategic coaching with our agriculture teachers, and we want to expand that to tech and engineering next year as well. First strategy, five, which is youth apprenticeships. The real key here for our actions is continuing to build partnerships and network opportunities for our businesses and our students to mirror what they want. We had 14 new youth apprenticeship partnerships established, and so, that's super exciting because we're mirroring what our kids are looking for. And then our last action, which will be really employed into next year, is we have some really cool, unique opportunities with like Brewing Futures and our Spartan Cafe and Snack Shack, and then Wildcat Cafe. And so, they're gaining that work experience. What we now want to do is take the current programs that we have and align that to the Department of Public Instruction's work-based learning requirements. Because if they match, then we can capture them as youth apprenticeships as well. So, we want to make sure that we're capitalizing on that as well. So, that's work that we'll do moving into next year. And then we are, we did do a celebration already of Kevin and Officer Finn of receiving the scholarship, just like the work the youth apprenticeships have done and helped establish for our community. And then our last strategy about our industry-recognized credentials, this is probably one of our newer areas that we are really tapping into and focusing on. And the key to this is really making sure that we're investing the money that we get when students engage in an industry-recognized credential back into our career readiness opportunities. So, students are able to, to experience the benefit of that. Just on a real high level, this is just new equipment upgrades. And I think it's important to mention that because we're funneling the money that we've received from whether it was the gala or other business partnerships right back to what our students have. And I think that's important to not only recognize that, but thank our partnerships with that. And then finally, so, we're doing all this work in action, and our goal is to get to 62% by next year at this time, right? Which would really be our graduating seniors of 2025. So, what are our early indicators? I kind of mentioned this already, but our youth apprenticeship applications, we have the highest number of applications that we've ever had for youth apprenticeships. We had 30 youth apprenticeships, I believe, last year. And we have over 100 kids who have applied for this year, so that's exciting. Our industry-recognized credential opportunities is another early indicator for us. We have 15 more industry-recognized credentials at this time now than we did last year at this time. And we still have many students that still need to test. Do you remember the number?
Oh, yeah, we had, I don't, so I won't speak to it.
So, example is we add, we added QuickBooks 2 is another IRC that we'll have for the first time in a long time.
Do you want the numbers or the certifications? Okay, because I do have those.
And then the last one is our advanced placement opportunities. You know, earlier in the fall, you approved AP Psychology. I'm super excited to report we have three sections of that running for next year. So, that's another early indicator that what we're doing is working and should pay off in higher numbers moving forward. And I think, you know, as we talked about, our partnerships are super important. So, making sure that we thank our YA employers. This is a list of our employers that we currently have right now. If you notice the asterisks on there, it's new ones that have been added. And you can see hospitality has really like boomed for us. And it's not just about getting in and doing necessarily restaurant work. It's being food and beverage certified and working on that management piece for a lot of our students. And I have to honestly, I just want to make sure that I commend our teacher at Ashkosh West, Jeff Becker, who's really been instrumental in pushing us in that direction to make sure that we give those opportunities to our students. So, with that, any questions that you have for us?
Dr. Hess.
So, the, the dual-credit and AP stuff, is that just, they have participated in it? Or they have to successfully earn the credit?
They've enrolled in the dual-credit course, yep.
Or for AP, do they actually have to pass the test?
We don't track it because we don't make it a requirement to take the test. So, yeah, yeah. So, we don't make it a requirement to take it. They have that opportunity.
I'm a little confused, though, about the, the overall goal that we're basically, the, the slide five. You're saying you're at 58%. You should, at this stage, already have the majority of the data for what the 2025 kids are going to have, right? When you tell me youth apprenticeship is up by 100, you've already met the 62% goal, haven't you? When you tell me youth apprenticeship is up by a hundred, you've already met the sixty-two percent goal, haven't you?
Those are for the applications for next year's seniors, so it wouldn't be included in this data for the 2025 graduates. So what I can tell you that we know for sure is we have fifteen more IRCs than we did last year at this time. But because kids haven't tested those, we can't, we don't know what those numbers are. They haven't completed their youth apprenticeships necessarily yet, so that we don't know that data as well. So it's pending till the semester's over, which is why the year, the data is always a year lagging.
So the youth apprenticeship?
Yeah, because not everyone who starts one will complete one.
Okay, so that, that is, it has to complete, or dual credit is the only you have to.
For the advanced placement, you just need to take the course, and you don't have to necessarily take the exam.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I would just like to encourage parents to take advantage of the dual credit opportunities. We had a gentleman that came to our meeting a couple weeks ago and said that he estimated he had saved roughly $60,000 in college tuition by taking these courses. And just to share my personal story, I've already shared it once, but if anyone is watching, I remember sitting here years ago as this evolved and thinking, my kids want to go out of state. They're never going to transfer these credits, and thinking, okay, I'm going to do them anyway because he wants to. And it's not cheap to take those tests. It's $500.
The advanced placement test?
Or the dual credit ones.
The, to get credit for the courses, there's no necessarily exam that's separate, but the credit for courses is about a hundred and ten dollars a credit.
Right, and so when my son told me that he was graduating a semester early, I did a little dance. And I, I was so excited because it literally saves thousands upon thousands of dollars. And I also remember thinking, when I was sitting in the seat, I don't want my child to graduate early. I want them to have the four-year experience. Yep, that was before I knew how expensive college was, and a three-year experience is just great. So please take advantage of this program. It is such a feather in our cap, and it's been awesome to watch it evolve to what it is today. You guys have both done a great job, and I'm just, hats off to you guys.
Smiltney?
You, I have now three quick questions, hopefully. You mentioned one, though, that with like the cost to actually get the dual credit, is that seen as a barrier to some participation? And do you think there's any bigger community-wide partnership that we can do to help overcome the cost of taking the AP test to make it worth taking the course? To take, to getting the dual credits? Is there any kind of effort that we could, that's allowable to encourage that kind of involvement for kids?
Yeah, I mentioned at the listening session, there was a, like a scholarship program set up at North through a donation, so that they do have applications for that. But I would love to expand that in a wider piece. You saw on Monday at the Celebrate Education that there was a grant awarded for personal protective equipment for students for CTE so that that wasn't a barrier for our students, so we want to remove as many barriers as we can. So any connections, I would love to work on collaboration to get that going forward.
My next question is about the youth apprenticeships. So you've had so many more applications. Does that mean if kids apply from you, try to match them with someone, or does it go based off of employers who have said that they would serve, or does it go both ways?
Yes, 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 so, so yes.
Okay, that's fine. My last question is much, is the biggest picture, I guess. This has come a lot more to my attention, to be fully transparent, because as a person running for school board, I'm asked to complete some questionnaires. And from both the Chamber of Commerce and a local labor union, they talked about improving partnerships and offering more, especially CTE-type programming to help make kids especially career-ready coming out of college, out of high school. What would be your dream partnership with, to, with, you know, employers and employee groups? Like, what would be the ideal here in Oshkosh? I hear about what happens in some other communities, and I think we had heard a good story from Kelly about some, especially CTE in-school work.
Oh, yeah, that story.
Yeah, of where like a kid did, it wasn't apprenticeship work, but it was, you know, learning the trades in school. What would it look like in the CTE world in particular if we could get some amazing community partnership? Is it growing what we already have?
I was going to say, I think it's growing what we have.
I will say that the more we can connect our business partnerships directly with our classroom teachers to grow those partnerships so that they are, they are organic relationships, right? Where, I'll give you an example. So just this morning, I had a youth apprenticeship evaluation meeting with a student and one of our, one of our classroom teachers. And this was a great opportunity for the classroom teacher and the employer while looking for an opportunity, or looking for opportunities where we can support in the classroom what the needs are in, on the job site. And then vice versa, how can that business partner help support the classroom teacher? So the more opportunities we have to connect business partners directly with our classroom teachers and empower them, that's my vision.
And I think that infrastructure is also the way that you stay contemporary and connected. So you think about what AI is going to do in, in, in the private sector over the next ten years. Like, the only way that we keep up with that and make sure that our kids are ready to enter a workforce that's going to be very different in ten years is that we have those partnerships and that in real time, like, we're evolving what these opportunities and experiences look like. So I think, I think you're right on. I think it's, it's the importance of that infrastructure, not necessarily saying it's this experience that kids need, but it's the experience that's relevant, right? And that's sometimes what we, you know, aren't built for necessarily, and we get to be reactive by, well, this is what we should, this is what we're doing ten years ago, and somebody knows how to do this, so let's keep doing it. Like, that's, that's way, I mean, we've evolved a lot, but that's really going to ramp up in the next ten years, right? Like, it's going to be very, very different because of technology. So I just appreciate, and I want to lift up both Jackie and Vicky's leadership in this, because in my forty years here, you know, I've seen a lot of growth and an opportunity, and great opportunities both through Chamber of Commerce and Go EDC and those partnerships to really get us in a position now where we are connected and to be able to grow naturally. So, so thank you for all of your work. Much appreciated.
I forgot to add the most important thing of what I was trying to communicate, which is that the dual credits transferred out of state. So these are state schools in other states, and they're still accepting the credits. So I just want to make that clear.
Dr. Herzak?
Thank you. I want to commend both of you for your work and your leadership on this. It's really about students first, and regardless of what post-high school plans a student has, whether that's a two-year, a four-year, a youth apprenticeship, it's on-the-job training, it's whatever they envision, military. These kinds of experience have a tremendous impact on our kids in a positive way. I want to particularly draw attention to slides five and six. I appreciate having the multi-year data on the, in these areas so we can see what the trends might be and can answer the question, are we growing? Are we declining? Are we staying the same? And these two address that for me. And then slide fourteen, I would add a caveat to that, that one on advisory boards. When Ted Samer was our local Vocational Education Coordinator, or LVEC, I believe he retired about 2006 or '07. We, prior to that, we did have advisory boards in all the areas. So I would say you have advisory boards now in the modern era with perhaps a little bit different focus, maybe mentoring, maybe sharing advice, mentoring students as well as staff, but I, I think that's really key, that we draw the, the community in. It struck me as you were talking that there is so much connection with what you're talking about here to other KPIs. For example, the one on student engagement, because what you're largely talking about here is active hands-on learning. It's not sitting and taking notes, and I'm not disparaging that, that's one way to learn. But largely what you're promoting here is active hands-on learning and connections with STEM. I see a connection also to the need to build stronger literacy and math skills. Because as the students get excited about these activities and they see, gee, I, I need to improve my reading, my literacy skills, or I need better math skills in order to pursue this pathway. So that may be a way that we can not only engage kids, but get them fired up about stretching themselves in terms of expanding their, their, their skills in literacy and math. And finally, the KPI that deals with community engagement and partnerships is huge in this area. So I get excited about this kind of thing because I can see such a direct benefit to students. So anything like this that benefits students, puts students first, and ties various KPIs together, I find very exciting. So thank you for your leadership in this area, and I look forward to next year's report.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Remember, we pulled number five. The consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or is discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Right. Carolyn. Okay, Smiltney?
Aye.
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzak?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now, resolution number five, Updates to Policy 0167.3, Public Comment at Board Meetings. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I pulled this one because, as we all know, this issue has been in committee for a while. And then in the mail, I received our lovely school news summary, and the very last article, and I've read this if anybody wants to take it up for the meeting. The very last article in this magazine talks about tips for managing public comment periods during board meetings. And one of the ones that they suggested was that we could limit public comment to certain individuals, such as taxpayers and residents or people that have students in the district. And the reason that we would do this is exactly what we said in the committee, is to stay focused on what really is important to our students and our community. So I feel really good about the conclusion that we came to regarding this policy change. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for anyone.
Thanks.
Dr. Hess?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't need to read somebody else's comments to tell me what to think about this. So my opinion is the same as I've said the last two times, that I am willing to listen to anybody who is interested in coming here, that there are people that live outside of this community that would have something to say that I feel like we should be listening to. So honestly, I feel like this is an attempt to limit particular people that we know we don't want to hear from that live outside of the district. So I won't be supporting this.
Okay, any other comments? Dr. Herzak?
Thank you. I will be supporting this. I believe that the changes that are found in this draft policy are consistent or in line with the policy that we already have in place on reconsideration of materials, where the individual needs to be a resident of the district or have a child in the district. In other words, they would need to have standing. Parents, anyone can contact us, community members, people who live outside the district can contact us via email, in-person, phone contact, contact information from the district website, they can send us letters, and I've received all kinds of manner of communication from people. So I, I see this as being in line, though, with the, the policy on reconsideration of materials that the individual would need to have standing in order to make public comment. I think it's important to remember that the purpose of our board meetings is, is to conduct board business. And there's, we're not required by law to have a public comment session. I believe it is important to have a public comment session, but I believe it's important to be in line with the policy on reconsideration of materials. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say something. I have never been in favor of this policy. Nothing has changed the four, however many times it came forward. I, too, would have to agree that I feel as though this is trying to silence a certain group. I like to hear from everybody, and I just, I, I think that, you know, there's an opportunity there that somebody from outside of the district or outside of our Oshkosh community could bring us and offer some type of valuable information. And truthfully, maybe be able to teach us something, so I, I won't support this. Thank you.
I don't know, I don't think I've spoken on this yet. Maybe I have at a prior meeting, but I have a hard time saying that this is silencing any certain group when the same parameters are being applied to everyone, and they're simple, and they're straightforward. Live here, have a student here, et cetera, et cetera. That applies to the whole community the same way. To me, that is silencing no particular group. I don't think this is a freedom of speech issue. I think this is an issue of how we want to conduct the business in the Oshkosh School District.
I guess I will just quickly add that I am here to represent students first, and then parents, taxpayers, and other people who may have students in the Oshkosh area School District, and I look forward to continuing to do that. And I also look forward to receiving all kinds of emails and other communications from whoever wants to come to us.
And I'll say, I, I don't want to stifle any group's enthusiasm, but I hope they have a representative in the Oshkosh area that would be relevant to us and our district that we would want to take into consideration or leverage.
Okay, we've all spoken.
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
No.
Herzak?
Aye.
Hess?
No.
Smiltney?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Thank you. Now we'll move to resolution number seven, and this is the 25-26 District School Calendar. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Smiltney?
Smiltney and Hess?
Other side of the table, very rare. Discussion. Dr. Herzak?
I just want to commend Dr. Coleman for his leadership on this topic. I've sat through many calendar discussions during my time on the board and as a central office administrator. And I appreciate that after getting input from a number of staff members, the committee was reconvened on March fourth. We took into consideration the input that they had, and adjustments were made to try to come to consensus, a calendar that we all could live with, even if it wasn't maybe our favorite. But I appreciate your leadership, Dr. Coleman. I know that this is something you inherited from other administrators who have gone before you and have had the privilege of presenting the calendar to the board. And so I want to thank you and Mrs. Johnson over there, who was also part of the calendar consideration. I'm probably leaving someone out, but any other administrator, staff member who participated, the people who wrote to us. I appreciate all the emails I received. I don't always respond to emails that are sent to the entire board. That's usually the role of the board president, but I can assure everyone that I've read all those emails and carefully considered what was included. So anyway, thank you to everyone who was involved in this so that we can get an accepted calendar and communicate that to our parents, our community, and most importantly, our students.
Thank you.
From what I understand, we added a contact day since the last time we discussed this. Is that correct?
Yes, 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 a student instruction day, yes.
So we added a student instructional day.
Yes.
Which I'm always in favor of. And I also understand from some phone calls that I've received that we, a consensus was reached.
Yes.
So those are double wins for me. That's all I have to comment.
Thank you. Looks like we can call the roll. All right, Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzak?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Thank you. Resolution number eight, 26-27 District School Calendar Draft. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Carolyn? Second.
Dewitt.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so, so this is the opportunity, what we wanted to do is get a couple years of a calendar going, at least. And so, so this was just part of the compromise, not necessarily to hardwire in a second year, but to get a good draft going so we can stay ahead of the curve in the development. So we want to be able to pass the calendar earlier in the year to give families more time to be able to plan, staff more.